I guess we're a minute ahead of schedule here, so maybe we can get out a minute early. Welcome to our special meeting of the City Council on May 30th, 2007. Please take your seats. Thank you. This is going to be an unusual meeting in that one of our council members will be conducting his business, or the business of the council in Indiana. I believe he's publicly noticed the meeting there. For all those who want to attend in Indiana, they can be at Mike's house in Indiana. And Councilman Curry will not be here tonight. Why don't we have the roll call?
The record will show that all members are present, with Councilmember Curry being excused and Councilmember Hen being present at a teleconference location pursuant to Government Code Section 54953B at 6101 Norwaldo Avenue in Indianapolis, Indiana.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we do our Pledge of Allegiance? And I think I'll lead the pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm glad to hear that Mike Hen is also saying the Pledge of Allegiance in Indiana. I could hear it coming in over the speaker. Thank you, Mike.
My hand was, my hand was over my heart. I have to say that I'm a bit disappointed that there are no citizens of Newport Beach here with me to join in the conversation.
Well, the meeting's not over yet, so someone may show up. You never know. Keep your door open. Okay. Pledge of Allegiance, we're here tonight to do some, only a couple items, and our first is item number four, is a public hearing on interim urgency ordinance extending a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of new residential uses that are transitory in nature, such as parolee probationer homes, safe houses, unlicensed residential care facilities, and residential care facilities general, as well as the issuance of new short-term lodging permits in all residential zoning districts of the city. Who's going to be giving our staff report?
I will.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council. This interim ordinance is a extension of the earlier adopted interim ordinance that would prevent the establishment of new group homes, a variety of different types of group home transitory uses in the city. The extension proposed in this item is for an additional five months. The original moratorium that was adopted will expire on June 8th, so that would extend it out to approximately October 8th. I don't have the exact date yet. And that would be for the purpose of giving the City Council the time to go forward with the proposed ordinance changes that were provided in the report that the City Council considered at its last meeting. And, and the goal would be to have a, the first meeting on these proposed ordinances ready to go by the second planning commission meeting in June. And depending upon how much time is spent over the public hearing process before the planning commission and the City Council, we believe we could get some new regulations approved and in place within the five-month period. This does not propose to extend the moratorium on the transitory uses that we know as short-term lodging permits, as we identified for the council in the report at the last meeting. Those can be readily dealt with in a little bit more quicker motion, procedure, because they are in Title V and do not have to go through the zoning code amendments. It's staff's intention to try and get some language before the council and for the public for consideration at their second meeting in June, I believe it's June 21st. And with that, I don't have anything else to add. The staff report pretty much outlines this information and also attaches the same report that the council adopted at the last meeting.
I think it's November 8th. Five months is November 8th? July, August, September?
Yeah, November.
Okay. So five, so we'll be extending it to November 8th. And the second thing we're going to be considering tonight is the initiation of the code amendment.
Yes, that would be the second agenda item that you have.
Okay. Does anybody in the council have questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What provisions, if any, are there to extend this further if we have to? Five months?
There is the ability to do a second extension.
For how long?
For up to another year.
Up to another year. So do we get to extend the five months to make it a full year and then another year on top of that? Or is it just a year past the five months?
Just a year past the five months. So we wanted to try and not be taken, you could extend this for up to 10 months and 15 days. But it's our, our recommendation that I think that it can be done within five months.
Any further questions of staff? Okay. Any other staff reports with regard to this?
No.
Okay, then I'll open it up for public comment. Quickly. It's public comment time. This is your chance. Be merciful, Dick. I'm missing the hockey game, I want you to know.
Okay, Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar. I was really pleased with the memo and it was going along, everything going fine for me. And I got to page six, and it talked about item number 11. And it says, "Unlicensed residential care facilities shall mean any residential care facility limited as the term is defined in Resident, in Municipal Code 250503OE that is not licensed by the state." Well, number one, I thought we were going to consider this, that whole code sections were supposed to go through the planning commission and the City Council before they were adopted. And this was adopted with just the one single council agenda. It didn't even come back for a, you know, a reconfirmation. But that's not my point. Okay, I believe that that definition, unlicensed residential care facilities, is incomprehensible as written. And number two, it's just patently wrong. So I'd like to just go to that for a moment. That, that is in the code, and they spec is E, and that was adopted supposedly on April 24th as an energy, interim urgency ordinance. But I understood that was supposed to be redone by, you know, going through the full hearing process, not, not already adopted. But anyway, my point is this. Unlicensed residential care facilities shall mean any residential structure or unit, whether owned or, and/or operated by an individual, for-profit or nonprofit entity that is not licensed by the state, that is maintained and operated to provide non-medical residential care, day treatment, or foster agency services for six or fewer adults, children, or adults and children, and which is not required by state law to be, to, and which is not required by state law to be treated as a single housekeeping unit for zoning purposes, and shall include licensed residential care facilities that are operated as integral facilities and together serve seven or more adults, children, or adults and children. Well, we're mixing everything up here. Just for, for straight statements, we're talking about sort of ADP facilities when we talk about residential care, non-medical residential care. Then we start messing around with foster care in here. Well, foster care is for kids, and they're talking about six or fewer adults, but then they say children or adults and children. Well, when you talk about children, it's 14 in a small facility. So this definition doesn't fit in here. But furthermore, it, it, I think you want the word "not" in there at the end. It says, "And shall include licensed residential care facilities that are operated as integral facilities." And to, and I think you want, "and shall not include," because this unlicensed residential care facilities is a definition, and you do not want to include the, the integral facilities in that. So I would like to just suggest that that word "not" should be after the "shall not include" in the last sentence. And it's, and you don't have that written, because it wasn't written here. Okay, and then I want to bring up the fact that I said the thing was illegal, and here's why. In the, in the California Code of Regulations, there's two codes in the California Code. There's a California Code of Regulations, and then each group has its own code that they've separately broken out. The ADP code is separate. But in the California Code of Regulations, there is a section that talks about licensing procedures of residential alcoholism or drug abuse recovery or treatment facilities. And it says, "A, except for facilities operated by a state agency, no person, firm, partnership, association, corporation, county, city, public agency, or other government entity shall operate, establish, manage, conduct, or maintain a facility which provides 24-hour non-medical residential alcoholism or drug abuse recovery or treatment services to adults without first obtaining a current valid license from the department." So if you have just one person in the facility and you're giving it, giving that guy treatment, you need a California license. It isn't just six and over. And that's very important. Then it, the next statement says that-
Dick, your five minutes are way up.
Okay, well, what I'm, the next two statements just reinforce that. So it's absolutely conclusive that only the state grants these licenses. And, and particularly, when you talk about a residential license, every facility that's a residential facility has to have a state license if it's an ADP facility. And so basically, this is, there is no such thing as an unlicensed residential care facility.
Okay, is that the point you're trying to make?
That's the point I'm trying to make. And, and if you could say, "Well, oh, the Sober Living says that," well, they, it doesn't.
Okay.
And I can show you that.
Does the City Attorney want to have any comment on that?
No, I don't have any comment.
I don't have any comment. I would just recommend that I can speak with Mr. Nichols about this another time. The, the intention is, for this moratorium, is to stop the establishment of a variety of uses at this point in time while we're going through the process of drafting new regulations.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have a public comment? How are you doing there, Mike?
I'm doing fine. I heard, I heard Mr. Nichols' entire presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Edward Dilks. I represent Sober Living by the Sea. I have our opposition in writing, so my remarks will be very, very brief. There are an original for the city clerk, one for the city attorney, and one for the member of the council. I guess the right thing to say is that we're pretty certain that most of this moratorium is not enforceable. It certainly isn't enforceable against licensed facilities. But more than anything, Sober Living by the Sea's been here 20 years. It has participated within this community on virtually every level, and has really sought to do what it could to participate in the process of this formulation, and really hasn't been able to enter the process except literally by shoving its way through the door, and would like very much to be able to help if there are legitimate problems and be able to show you how a facility is appropriately managed when they are, and to show you what rules in fact are expeditious and what rules are not, because they have 20-some years' experience here in this community to share with you, and would be happy to do that. We don't, we don't think either this or the ordinance you're contemplating is going to solve any of the problems that you're focused on. We think focused code enforcement could do that, and can't quite figure out why that doesn't seem like a worthwhile objective to people. In any event, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, that concludes our presentation beyond the documents that I gave you. Plus, I would like also to have marked as exhibits for this meeting the maps and the various charts that we submitted at the hearing on the original moratorium, which are referenced in the written documents.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dilks. Mr. Mayor? Yes?
Is there a reason why you didn't try to get to this, get this to us so that we'd have a chance to read it before the meeting and, and try to understand what it says before we take an action?
It is not profoundly different than what got submitted the last time. The truth of the matter is, it simply didn't get copied before that, and I take responsibility for that. This is, it was written but simply not copied and collated until probably 4:00 this afternoon. That's, that's my fault. I apologize. I will be happy to see to it things are provided more timely.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Another question for you, sir.
I'm sorry?
Yeah. When some of this, the concerns began to come up, did you make this offer to?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, this offer has been made in writing at least three times I can think of over the last six months.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else about to make a public comment? It's okay, you're dismissed this time.
Bob Rush. I'd like to point out to the last speaker that Sober Living by the Sea has been given every opportunity to participate in the process. They've pushed through the front door, through the back door, through the windows. They've hired an ex-mayor. They've hired an ex-planning commissioner to help them. They've been afforded every opportunity to participate. That being said, I'd like to ask a couple of questions of Ms. Clausen, if that's possible, about the process. You mentioned a moment ago that your recommendation is to extend the moratorium by five months. Okay, but you said we have the ability to push it out 10, 10 months and 15 days, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. And then beyond that, the next pass is 12 months, correct?
Yes.
So a total, we have in front of us right now a total of 22 and 1/2 months, potentially of extending this moratorium out. But if we bypass this opportunity, we only have 17 and 1/2 months. We bypass this opportunity to take, to take advantage of the full 10 and 1/2 months, correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
So why would we do that? Why would we cut ourselves short right here at the beginning, right at the starting gate? Why would we cut ourselves short? Why not just go with 10 and 1/2 months? And then if we feel at five months that we've gotten everything accomplished that we need to get accomplished, we can meet and amend that at that point in time.
It's my recommendation that we do the five months.
I, I-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. I don't wish to argue with the-
I'm just asking a question.
You know what, Bob, this is not Q and A time.
I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
Bob, I understand. If you had questions, you had plenty of opportunity to call the city attorney outside of the meeting. This is a time for you to make a statement. If she chooses to address your comments afterwards, she will do that, or any of the other council members. But it's not the time to interrogate or question-
I'm not interrogating anybody.
Or, or do whatever you want to do here. If you have a statement, you have five minutes to make it.
This is my opportunity to talk, right? And say, "I need to understand the process."
And if she doesn't want to answer your questions, or you don't like the way she answers them, well, then you need to move on.
Then would one of you please explain it to me?
We're not here to explain anything to you. This is a time for you to make a five-minute comment. If you have a comment that you'd like to make, please do so.
I think it's a little short-sighted to just immediately cut ourselves off of five months. Immediately cut ourselves short of five months. We don't know exactly what to anticipate here. We, I, I tell you that there's a number of areas that have not been adequately addressed by what's been presented so far, and it may take us all of 10 months just to come to the first, to the first comprehensive draft. What we have in front of us, what's been presented up till now, is only a partial draft, in my opinion. We're still looking at at least two or three major categories of this law. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
And I'll be calling you this week. Thanks, Rob.
I want to reiterate what Bob said. I think it should be 10 and 1/2 months. I got a survey on my doorstep. I called, talked to Catherine Wolcott, asked why it was only passed out to five blocks on the whole peninsula. If you want a true impact of what's happening to all of us, wouldn't you ask us all? Catherine Wolcott even admitted to me she won't shop at Albertson's because of what's going on on this peninsula. So my recommendation, number one, is to go the 10 and 1/2 months and really research this. Pass, pass the survey out to all the residents and give them equal time to let you guys know what's really going on out there. They gave it to all of Balboa Island and five blocks on the peninsula, and we have all of these group homes? I was told that they were understaffed. They didn't have anybody to pass them out. I was told that she'd call me back. I didn't get a call, or I did get a call back, but I was living from out of town and I found 100 of them on my doorstep. So besides all the time and expense I put into trying to work in good faith with the city, I find these on my doorstep to pass out. I think the residents have been working in active cooperation with the city and have contributed an enormous amount of time and resources to work with you on all of this. And I'm asking Newport Beach City Council right here, from all concerned citizens of Newport, we want a direct and public affirmation and verification that you have no personal financial interests that would create a potential conflict of interest with the decision on group homes. And I will email you tomorrow, and we'd like a response within 72 hours. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Excuse me, could I ask a question?
Mm-mm.
No, I can't.
Sure. Go ahead.
Do you feel, you've, you've read the materials. Do you feel that if the questionnaire were more widely distributed, we would get much different information?
I think you'd get more information. I think it's ludicrous to pass it out on the first block of 39. When I live on the second block of 39, and I am impacted daily. I'm working with the police department, which Robin Clausen said she was going to work with the police department, get into something in correspondence with the police department. I'm doing-
Ma'am, you need to speak into the microphone.
I am impacted daily, and I am only one block away.
No, and I understand that, that the impacts are greater than the area we questioned, but I'm saying, weren't the issues raised by our, I looked at the questionnaire, it seemed pretty significant in terms of the impacts that it recorded, and I'm just wondering if you think there would be additional, not, not more, but additional impacts that were not unearthed?
Yes.
Could you give me an example? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm just curious.
Where I live, I'm harassed daily. Harassed, that's an impact. I, I have, I found drugs in the, on my side yard. I don't live right next door to them. I walk differently to the beach. People I know don't wa, let their kids walk to school. I could go on and on and on and on and on. If you'd like me to address all of those, I will. But I think that all of the citizens should have an opportunity. I'm finding out things that I didn't even know from other citizens that were, I've met. So if I don't know this, how does the city know this? And if you want to really address this, I think you should let everybody have a voice.
City Attorney?
There is, well, the, the, the timing for the survey was done to be able to prepare the report that we provided to the city, and we had a very short time period to provide that report and for the council to review and issue it. And that was the reason for the short time period, and it's elected. There is still plenty of time for anybody on the peninsula that lives there that wants to fill out and identify, fill out that, either by asking for a copy of it by email. It's on the internet, it's on the city's internet, and it can be obtained that way. And anybody can still fill one out. We are still in the process of doing this, and the information can be provided as part of the public hearing process as well. So there's no prohibition in anybody filling those out that would like to at this time, or in the, in the next, probably at least in the next three weeks.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Councilman?
On the moratorium, if, I'm trying to get the, the dates here now. If we extend this for five months, did I hear you correctly in saying that the end of the five months, if we don't feel that we have adequately put together what we need to put together, can we extend it for a year?
Yes.
Okay, if we extend it for 10 months and 15 days right now, at the end of the 10 months and 15 days, can we still extend it for another year?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that what you're really saying is that if we take the longer time tonight, then we would get an extra five months?
I think that's what Mr. Rush was coming up with, about 22 months versus 17.
Why, but you still feel that we can adequately put together the ordinances that we need to have in the time, in the five-month timeframe?
We have put together the ordinance. It's just a matter of whether, you know.
We can try it out during that five-month period, okay?
So the council would like to extend it for longer they can. It's just my recommendation on the basis of the, the uses and the type of issues that we're dealing with, that, that we should have a shorter moratorium to give the city the, kind of, I think, I think at a staff level to continue to work with this. Sometimes when you extend things, extend things out, it takes a little bit longer to do it.
At the end of the moratorium, or sometime even before the five-month period, what would we adopt in order to go forward with that moratorium?
What would happen, and as I suggested, that the, the draft, we're, we're working on completing the ordinance that was presented to the council on the 24th, and that would be put together in a full official, you know, kind of a formatted, in an ordinance form. It would be provided with findings and all the other information, and go to the planning commission at their second meeting in June. And then the planning commission, that would be their first hearing on it. The citizens and everybody would have a chance to come. They would have a chance to explain where they think it's deficient, changes, make recommendations at that particularly first meeting. And then depending upon what the planning commission wanted to do, it could be continued to another meeting, or they could forward it on to the council for action.
Okay, so then, then once we get it from the planning commission, then we take action, or hold our public hearings, and we take action, when we take final action, then we don't need the moratorium anymore?
No.
And you, so you feel that we can actually get something on the books in less than five months, is what I'm hearing?
I think, I think the council could, depending upon how the public hearing, so I think five months would be plenty of time for a, a public hearing con, process with continued public hearings. That's assuming that they don't all go, if, if it went on the, on the second meeting in Ju, in, planning commission, on the second meeting in June, and the first meeting, and it went directly to the council in the first meeting in July, and was adopted by the second meeting in July, it'd be done in August. So that gives you, that really gives the council basically extensions from August all the way to Au, to November, to be able to get it done with additional hearings if necessary.
Councilwoman Diggle?
Couple of questions. What do you anticipate will be the city's efforts to obtain input from those that will be regulated by this ordinance?
I would welcome input from those that would be regulated by this ordinance.
And then my question may be more appropriate to the city attorney. Moving forward, what can the city undertake in terms of a more comprehensive information gathering process?
I, I believe that the information that we provided in the report would be the information that we, we would use to support the findings. If we get additional information by people filling out the surveys, that would also be helpful, if there's anything that's a different impact that maybe isn't handled. And I know that the people that are filling out the forms may not know, so it wouldn't matter. If they really feel that they're having specific impacts to them and their neighborhood where they're living, then it would, it would be, it would behoove them to go ahead and fill out that form and provide it to us. And that would be provided at the planning commission meeting, and even all the way up to the city council meeting if they, if they need, if need be.
Okay, anybody else from the public that wants a comment on this item?
Good evening. Denise Obermann, for the record. Just very briefly, if I recall correctly, it took a year, give or take, to pass the changes to the ordinances that occurred in 2004. So I, I commend the city for trying to get this resolved as quickly as possible, but I would concur that the five months is pretty aggressive. The other thing that's become pretty clear, in addition to all the legal aspects of the ordinance, is that the city does not seem to have a handle on the current actual uses relative to the general plan. So it's my understanding that there is a plan, and I guess I'd like to get a confirmation of this, there is anticipation of some zoning studying that's going to be going on in the month of June with Hope Ireland, I believe is the firm's name. Is that going to occur? May I ask that question? In any event, I'm sorry, I had an issue.
We, we have retained a team of consultants headed by the firm of Hope Ireland to do a comprehensive revision to our zoning code, and- a comprehensive revision to our zoning code, and that's to implement the recently adopted general plan. It isn't necessarily tied to this issue. What we're anticipating is the ordinance that the city attorney has spoken of, if approved by the city council between now and November, would just be incorporated into the new zoning ordinance when we bring that hopefully early next year.
However, let me just bring up, it will inherently address this if it's properly implemented, that studying and the updating of the zoning, because what happened is there have been no regulations, and nobody's really kept track of the uses, and particularly in the districts that include the Newport, Lido Island, Baboa Peninsula, Newport Heights and surrounds, as well as Corona Del Mar, I don't recall the number of those districts, but those are going to need to be revisited, in our opinion, those, because they are mischaracterized. And I may add that even the representatives of CRC and Sober Living By the Sea mischaracterized the uses that exist here, that may have caused them to think that it was appropriate to over-concentrate their facilities here. So, I do think that the city is going to want to look carefully at its uses and integrate a program for use management, for regulating the uses, for managing them, integrating them. I said this three years ago, I said it three months ago, and I'll say it again now, and I think that will take some time. I'm confident the city can do it, but I think it's not to be taken lightly. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to make a comment?
Nerlton Alexander, Baboa Island. I'm concerned about the short-term rentals, and I know you said, and it's kind of a question also, just from my understanding, you're going to separate the two out at this time? Is that correct?
The moratorium is not being extended as to the short-term rentals.
Okay. But some codes were brought up, or some regulations that they want to add?
There may be some additional regulation of the short-term lodging industry, yes.
When will that occur?
I think we were planning on trying to bring back some draft regulations for review by the council and by the community at the June 26 meeting of the city council.
So, we can address those issues at that time?
Yes. And they would not be, it would not be brought back on the 26th for enactment, it would be for review and for comments and that sort of thing.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate the input.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment, and I'll entertain a motion.
Remove the recommended action, which is to adopt the attached interim emergency ordinance, which extends the temporary moratorium on the establishment of the operation of residential uses that are transitory in nature for five months, and allows a moratorium on the issuance of new short-term lodging permits to expire on June 8, 2007.
Have a second?
Seven.
Okay, any further comment? Mike, do you want to say anything?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, then please vote. Oh, roll call, sorry, that's right, we're going to roll call vote.
Now, vote by roll call. We'll start with Councilmember Hen.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Selig.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember DeGle.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yes.
And Mayor Rosansky.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our second item on the agenda, which is group residential uses, code amendment initiation, an amendment to Title 20, zoning code of the Newport Beach municipal code, to revise definitions, land use classifications, and regulations relating to group residential uses and short-term lodgings. Do we have any further staff report on this? See, we do.
Just to say, Honorable Mayor and members of the council, the recommended changes that were presented to you at your May 22 meeting will require an initiation to amend Title 20, the zoning code. I just want to stress that the initiation is just simply formal direction, staff proceed with the amendment, and that any adoption of any changes will require at least one public hearing before the planning commission, and at least one public hearing before the city council.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Mike, any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, I'll open it up for public comment.
Well, my, my area comment here is an amortization of non-conforming uses. This is, I guess, how we're going to handle those that do not conform to the use, and how do we get them under the use? And my comment is, is that more and more, you're following state law almost down the line, and state law is very clear that residential ADP homes have to be licensed, no matter what size they are. And this is really, the reason for that is, is those people want to prove that go through this thing, that they've gone through a licensed program. That's, that's what allows them to get off probation and do all these other things. So, licensing of these programs is supposed to be the key characteristic. The second thing is, is that we have no way of tracing whether a guy is in the program unless we can see that he's staying in a licensed residential facility overnight, as well as going to classes. Just going to classes doesn't solve it. This is all very clear in state law, and I, it's 10505, the Code of Regulations, as I just said. I believe that the people that are under this law know it exactly, they understand it exactly. They did not want us to know how big they were, that they were the size of the largest hotels in town as far as the number of residential units being used, and that the total number being served was more than stay in some of our largest hotels. This is, so what I'm really saying is, is I don't believe there should be any amortization. These guys are breaking the law, they're knowledgeably breaking the law, and they should be penalized. Those homes that are not licensed should be simply taken off the rolls, and they should not be allowed to be brought back on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to comment on this item? Okay.
Are we supposed to be making comments on the podium?
You need to come to the podium, so.
No, this is, there isn't really a proposed ordinance in the sense that this is just an initiation of the changes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. All right, seeing no one else, I'll close the public comment section.
Just for the record, I think the ordinance is a good start, and I will be brief. There are a number of areas that need to be addressed in order for the ordinance to satisfactorily regulate these uses, consistent with the general plan, and I'd just like to identify some key areas for the council's benefit, because we anticipate these are areas that are going to require a lot of work, and we're prepared to collaborate with the city and others in doing so. One is, there does need to be a process for implementation of the conditional use review and permitting process, so that we can be assured that process is approached in a systematic and equitable manner, and I'd say mutually equitable manner, not only for the operators of the businesses, but also for the citizens and constituents of the community. Secondly, along with that, there is going to have to be some type of filing or registration that enables the city to identify where these, when these operations are established and where they're located. The city of Riverside has done this, a number of other cities have done it successfully, and it's very simply, as with any other type of use or operation, enables the city to know where these uses are, and that needs to be developed. And that would in turn trigger the need, or lack thereof, for some type of use permit, according to the zoning and the ordinances. Next, with regard to amortization of use, we know that the city is aware that the current amortization in the codes, the general policy, needs to be altered. This is a type of use that can be readily relocated or otherwise mitigated for, so either no amortization, or a very short period of amortization would be all, that would reasonably be required, and we know that yet has to be hammered out. And then next, with regard to the issue of separation or spacing, that can be approached in a number of different ways. We aren't going to propose how it should be addressed, but certainly, we all know we have a serious over-concentration problem of the various types of group homes in the districts that I mentioned earlier, and we do need to address how we're going to mitigate for the impacts and get a reasonable amount of this use existing in our community. So, that may be a combination of spacing and some other types of zoning and use review and hearing. So, that's it, thank you for now.
Thank you.
I had a question for the city attorney.
Yes.
One of the issues raised was that of portability, where the businesses move to new properties. Will the use permits run with the land, or how will that, how will those be?
Yes, the use permits do run with the land.
Any other questions? Okay, anybody else want to make a public comment before I close the public hearing? Okay, public comments portion is closed. Is there any further discussion by council? Mike, anything, any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Remove the recommended action, the Doc Resolution Number 2007 dash?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Initiating amendments to Title 20 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hen.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Selig.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember DeGle.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yes.
Mayor Rosansky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, public comments on non-agenda items? Counsel, I mean, Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Anybody want to make a public comment on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public comments. I don't see it here, motions for reconsideration, do we not entertain that? Okay, then we are adjourned, thank you.